I'll order the meeting of the East Grand Forks City Council for Tuesday, December 19th, 2023. Megan, could you take call, roll call, please?
Mayor Steve Gander.
Here.
Council President Mark Olstead.
Here.
Council Vice President Tim Riappel.
Here.
Council members Clarence Vetter.
Here.
Ben Pachivinsky.
Here.
Dale Helms.
Here.
Brian Larson.
Here.
Karen Peterson.
Here.
Seeing the quorum is present, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Open forum is an opportunity for members of the public to address the city council on items not on the current agenda. Items requiring council action may be deferred to staff or boards and commissions for research of future council agendas if appropriate. Do we have anyone who needs to speak? Seeing none. Any approval of minutes for the November 28th work session, the December 5th special meeting, and the December 5th council meeting?
Motion.
Motion by Helms.
Second.
Second by Vetter. Take roll, please.
Larson.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Vetter.
Yes.
Pachivinsky.
Yes.
Riappel.
Yes.
Helms.
Yes.
Olstead.
Yes.
Schedule bid lettings, there's none. Schedule public hearings. Public hearing on the proposed policy for the usage of unmanned aviation vehicles operated for the regional special operations group's unmanned aircraft systems team. Have a motion.
Move.
Move.
Moved by Helm, second by Olstead. All approve, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Hearing is now open. Anyone have anything they'd like to say?
Not sure if anybody has any questions about it or not. This is just part of our special operations group that's been in place for a long time. We've just added a person to that team some time ago. He's completed all his training. They've actually acquired enough drones, the team has, where he could potentially start having one to bring with him on shift. So we would have it available if we were to need it at a moment's notice. Not likely to happen very frequently, but it's nice to have if you do need it. And so Minnesota statute requires you'd have a policy in place if you have somebody that's actually using those drones. So that's why we're taking these steps.
Okay. Any questions? Seeing none.
Thank you.
Have a motion to close a public hearing.
Move.
Okay. Moved by Vetter, seconded by Olstead. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none. Consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda will be adopted with one motion. However, council members may request individual items to be pulled from the consent agenda for discussion and action if they choose. Does anyone want anything pulled on the consent agenda? Okay. Seeing none. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move.
Moved by Larson.
Second.
Second by Vetter. Megan?
Larson.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Vetter.
Yes.
Pachivinsky.
Yes.
Riappel.
Yes.
Helms.
Yes.
Olstead.
Yes.
Motion carries. Acknowledged receipt of reports of officers, boards, and commissions, regular meeting minutes of the Water and Light Power and Building Commission for November 15th, 2023, city financial statements as of October 31st, 2023. Communications, there's none. Old business, there's none. New business. Consider adopting policy directive 46.2.1, providing the guidelines for the use of the unmanned aircraft systems for the East Grand Forks Police Department.
Move.
Moved by Helm, seconded by Olstead. Megan?
Larson.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Vetter.
Yes.
Pachivinsky.
Yes.
Riappel.
Yes.
Helms.
Yes.
Olstead.
Yes.
Number 11. Consider adopting resolution number 23-12-81, approving and adopting the 2050 plan update to the Metropolitan Transportation Plan on the street and highway element of the comprehensive
Move.
Moved by...
Second.
Vetter, seconded by Larson. Nancy.
Good evening, council members. Just wanted to give you an update on where we are in the process. The last meeting that we held for the planning commission last Wednesday was discussed for final approval of the street and highway element of the metropolitan planning, or metropolitan transportation plan. We looked at this street and highway plan as what it truly is, as a transportation plan. We wanted to make sure that we were addressing our needs in terms of streets, levels of service, where our money could be spent in the future, what things, where we see congestion, things like that. That being said, we voted to approve the plan as is, including the intercity bridge in the document as well as in our illustrative project list. And then after that meeting, we went into the TAC meeting, I representing the planning and Steve with engineering, city engineering. At the TAC meeting, it was discussed as well. A lot of things were brought up, and I'll let Stephanie Helford kind of fill you in on where we are in the process. But again, represented our planning commission as looking at this as a transportation plan, something that we're using for our future build outs, streets, levels of service, where we see congestion, where we think roads, bridges, other things are necessary to continue the efficient and effective transportation system in our metropolitan area. And it was also voted to leave as presented to you now. So I'll hand it over to Stephanie, and she can fill you in on where we're at.
So like Nancy said, it was approved at the TAC meeting. There was two others that voted against it, but it still passed. It was presented at Grand Forks Council last night. They approved the plan except for the removal of the intercity bridge from the illustrative list. So, but the plan was approved with removal of that part, and that's what they approved moving forward. Just so, I'm sure the question will come up, so I'll just beat you to it. If you approve the plan as is, and that's what they motioned, I will bring that forward to the NPO exec board, and that's where they'll decide and how they want to move forward. But I will let them know what motions and what was discussed at each council.
Any questions for Stephanie? Seeing none.
Question.
Okay.
So the motion before us has the intercity bridge as an illustrative project in it? Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, we've got a motion. Megan?
Larson.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Vetter.
Yes.
Pachivinsky.
Yes.
Riappel.
Yes.
Helms.
Yes.
Olstead.
Yes.
Number 12. Consider adopting resolution number 23-12-82, approving the plans and specifications and order advertisement for bids for the 2023 city project number two, LaFave Park Improvements.
Move.
Move.
Moved by Vetter, seconded by Olstead. Any questions? Megan?
Larson.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Vetter.
Yes.
Pachivinsky.
Yes.
Riappel.
Yes.
Helms.
Yes.
Olstead.
Yes.
Motion carries. Number 13. Consider approving this special use permit for the installation of a second concrete ready mix plant at the Strata site for temporary use in the summer of 2024, with the requirements they meet any additional conditions requested by the planning commission or council regarding noise, time of operation, length of operation, traffic congestion, or requested truck route.
Move.
Moved by Vetter.
Second.
Seconded by Larson. Ms. Ellis.
Thank you again. This is a special use permit, what we'd consider an amendment. They've been grandfathered in as a special use for their location, which is at the old Porta Mix plant, just to the east of the city buildings. They currently have a permanent ready mix plant. They're asking to move in a temporary one to help with a road project that's going to be north of town. They do have a route where they'll come out onto Business Highway 2 and up to 5th, and then head over to 220 currently. I've reviewed kind of, and they provided information to you in an email, I reviewed some of their requests. It looks like it's going to be at the height of their operation, 200 to 300 trucks a day. That averages about 20 to 30 trucks per hour, which really isn't that much. They'd be traveling mainly on most of our collector and arterial roads, so we shouldn't have any issues with the amount of traffic. Hours of operation, we typically have hours of operation for construction projects, so when they're physically doing work in town, we usually have like a 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. They're requesting 6:00 to 6:00. But that's just for the truck traffic through town, which we are currently, don't have a set time limit for trucks to be traveling through town. The work itself will be conducted out of city limits. So we didn't feel it necessary to set a time limit and/or hours of operation or time of operation. They have bid on the project, so the project itself will have a sunset or an end to it. One of the questions was asked, and we do have Jay Evans with Strata Corporation here if you have any questions. One of the questions was asked was, they'd like to move in the plant for this particular project, but in the future, they were hoping to maybe amend their special use permit to allow a temporary plant to be moved off and on site when needed for other road construction projects following similar hours of operation and travel and things like that, based on the current permit that they have. And so that would be something they would come back for. They're just wondering if you have any appetite in them, you know, allowing something like that to happen, or if you're opposed to it, then they would just do it for this project and then not come back for the secondary one. So I guess, if you have any questions of me, I'm here. Otherwise, there's representatives from Strata, if you have any questions of them.
Mr. Mayor?
I guess I would say that Strata has the site looking very good. I've been by there many times and looking at the facility that you have there. We're really glad you're here. I know this is a request for a temporary increase in capacity, but if you want to grow on that site, I think it's a good site for what you're doing there. I think it's kind of secluded away from certain other activities that we have, and I would certainly support good and reasonable growth on that site as you expand your presence in our community. That's me, but keep up the good work. Yep.
What else?
Just for your information, we did not receive any calls or concerns or anyone questioning the operation. It's in the right location, it's general industrial, and so we really just didn't see, we didn't have anyone that was opposed to the operation itself, so.
Okay. Thank you. Megan?
Larson.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Vetter.
Yes.
Pachivinsky.
Yes.
Riappel.
Yes.
Helms.
Yes.
Olstead.
Yes.
Motion carries. Number 14. Consider granting preliminary approval of the Green Acres re-subdivision plot and putt amendment with the requirement of adding easements requested from the utility group, submission of mutual encroachment agreement, and submission of a digital file of the plot. Have a motion.
Move.
Second. Moved by Vetter, seconded by Helm. Nancy.
This is the property located on 5th. The property, there's a specific property line that's being moved that runs in between a garage. It's being moved to the east to allow for that garage to be located with the new apartment building. The movement of this property line and one other property line to allow for a little bit more parking is due to the fact that they're looking at selling, splitting the property and selling it. For those reasons, we had utility locates. We want to make sure that our utilities are currently in a utility easement. The easements itself, we take so that buildings aren't built over them and that we can get in and access our utilities. Then there are specific private utilities, water, sanitary, that might run across one property and into another that are more privately owned between the two. We want to make sure that we also have an encroachment agreement so that if in fact anyone needs to get in to fix those utilities, that they have the ability to do so. For example, if there's a water or sewer or cable that runs through one property to the back property owned by someone different, that we can in fact have the utility group get in and get permission to be on that land to fix that. So we'll be requesting that encroachment agreement so that we can view it, make sure that the city's removed from any liability for anything that's not our utilities and that Ron's going to review. That would be something simple that's recorded with a plat. So we have had all the utilities staked. I don't foresee us taking any additional utility easements at this point in time. So we'll let them know that they can continue forward with that. We'll get that agreement, and we'll be back in January for the final approval.
Questions for Nancy? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Larson.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Vetter.
Yes.
Pachivinsky.
Yes.
Riappel.
Yes.
Helms.
Yes.
Olstead.
Yes.
Motion carries. Number 15. Consider declaring tempered glass a surplus and authorize the sale of the glass to Northwood Hockey Boosters for $2,500. Have a... Moved by Helm.
Second.
Seconded by Vetter. Any questions? Seeing none. Megan?
Larson.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Vetter.
Yes.
Pachivinsky.
Yes.
Riappel.
Yes.
Helms.
Yes.
Olstead.
Yes.
Motion carries. Number 16. Consider adopting resolution number 23-12-84, approving a 5% increase of the 2023 tax levy collectible in 2024.
Move.
Moved by Olstead.
Second.
Seconded by Larson. Carla.
I'm just here in case somebody has questions on it. It was presented in your packet. The 5% increase would, we would use reserves or fund balance of $174,000 to balance it. And we presented to you last week our best estimate of our fund balance from 2023, and items that we know are saving into our fund balance that will cover that $174,000. And the fund balance, our best guess for the end of 2024 will be at, our revenues would be at 49% of the fund balance, of 49% of what our revenues are. And the state recommends 35% to 50% of revenues. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor? I've said it 23 times, and I'll say it 24. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
To everyone involved. Carla.
Yes, there was a lot of help with...
Department heads.
Other department heads, and I can't thank Reed enough for his involvement this year.
Yeah.
Learning experience for all of us and mixing it up, but we did really well. So thank you all. And we did take a lot of effort, starting in February. Thank you Clarence and Karen for being on that finance committee with us. We did dig in really deep, and so hopefully we won't be doing that this year because we dug really deep last year. So we kind of know where we want to go in 2025, so thank you so much.
Megan?
Larson.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Vetter.
Yes.
Pachivinsky.
Yes.
Riappel.
Yes.
Helms.
Yes.
Olstead.
Yes.
Motion carries. Number 17. Consider adopting resolution number 23-12-85, approving the 2024 budget and to authorize specific financial related activities.
Move.
Moved by Olstead.
Second.
Seconded by Larson. Carla.
This resolution just shows what we plan to spend in our general fund and in the different departments, what we plan to spend in capital outlay, any transfers we intend using in 2024, and also to... Also look at the enterprise funds which were sent in to actually approve those also. We did enlist the actual expenses for them, but you did receive that in your packet, and it is on our website if anybody's interested in looking in the enterprise fund, which is water, electric, stormwater, and sewer and refuse.
Hearing none. Megan?
Larson.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Vetter.
Yes.
Pachivinsky.
Yes.
Riappel.
Yes.
Helms.
Yes.
Olstead.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. 18. Consider adopting resolution number 23-12-83, authorizing the implementation of the updated compensation plan for 2024 and 2025 and cost of living increases for all non-union employees.
Move.
Move.
Moved by Vetter, seconded by Olstead. Any questions? Seeing none. Megan?
Larson.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Vetter.
Yes.
Pachivinsky.
Yes.
Riappel.
Yes.
Helms.
Yes.
Olstead.
Yes.
Motion carries. Number 19. Consider approving the internal hiring process for a public works supervisor.
Move.
Moved by Vetter.
Second.
Seconded by Larson. Any questions? Seeing none. Megan?
Larson.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Vetter.
Yes.
Pachivinsky.
Yes.
Riappel.
Yes.
Helms.
Yes.
Olstead.
Yes.
Motion carries. Number 20. Consider approving the internal hiring process for public works foreman.
Move.
Moved by Helm.
Second.
Seconded by Vetter. Any questions? Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Stordahl, there've been some ripples through your department here with hiring. That means a lot of it falls on you during this time in the several transitions. I just want to say thank you. That's it. You don't have to come if you don't, but I want to say thank you because when your department is going through changes like this, a whole lot of that lands on your plate in the short term, and we thank you for that. Yeah.
Megan?
Larson.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Vetter.
Yes.
Pachivinsky.
Yes.
Riappel.
Yes.
Helms.
Yes.
Olstead.
Yes.
Motion carries. Number 21. Consider approving the labor agreement and memorandum of understanding for 2024-25 between the City of East Grand Forks and the Internal International Association of Firefighters Local Number 3423.
Move.
Moved by Vetter, seconded by Olstead. Any questions? Seeing none. Megan?
Larson.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Vetter.
Yes.
Pachivinsky.
Yes.
Riappel.
Yes.
Helms.
Yes.
Olstead.
Yes.
Motion carries. Number 22. Consider approving the labor agreement and memorandum of understanding for 2024 and 2025 between the City of East Grand Forks and the ASF CME Council 65.
Move.
Moved by Olstead.
Second.
Seconded by Vetter. Any questions? Hearing none. Megan?
Larson.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Vetter.
Yes.
Pachivinsky.
Yes.
Riappel.
Yes.
Helms.
Yes.
Olstead.
Yes.
Motion carries. Claims consider authorizing the city administrator clerk treasurer to issue payment of recommended bills and payroll.
Move.
Moved by Helm.
Second.
Seconded by Pachivinsky. Any questions? Seeing none. Megan?
Larson.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Vetter.
Yes.
Pachivinsky.
Yes.
Riappel.
Yes.
Helms.
Yes.
Olstead.
Yes.
Motion carries. Reports. Mayor Gander.
A while ago, we met to talk about the economic status of our community and look at some economic opportunities going forward. And if anyone was there, and the news report that came out of that would indicate that sure, we have some room to do better in some areas of economic growth and development for our community. I want you to know, though, that coming out of that also, I've had some conversations
Most of you know that Gary Shields has gone around for a few years talking to businesses. Gary initially has had the thought that maybe we should have an economic group over here that's maybe outside of the Chamber of Commerce. I believe he is taking a close look at, maybe there's an opportunity to actually grow our economic status or economic condition in East Grand Forks inside of the chamber. So he and Barry have tightened up their relationship, the director of the local Chamber of Commerce, and we're meeting and gathering to see what we can do to build some momentum for the ability to grow our economic climate in East Grand Forks even inside the Chamber of Commerce. And Barry wants to be a big part of that. Gary Shields wants to be a big part of that. As you know, Gary has the Eagles Club over there in, toward the Ace Hardware back in that area, and it's really a nice venue. It's kind of hidden away in there, and he'd like to grow that along with his interest in the whole area. I'd like to see a lot happen also along Highway 220 North and the Highway 2 East corridor, and then over to the industrial park, and we'll be meeting and gathering to talk about all of that. I think our downtown is doing great, and let's see if we can make sure to carry that prosperity out into the other commercial areas and industrial areas of our city. So that'll be an effort going forward. We haven't gotten the results of that study that was undertaken that day. That should be coming in the next couple of weeks or so, and we're going to take those results and whatever else we can bring in and see if we can get that to go. But I wanted you to know that that's in the hopper and that Gary Shields is, if you've talked to him at all, you know he's pretty enthusiastic when he gets into something, and I'm glad that he's a board working for good things. Thanks.
Mr. Vedder?
Thank you, Vice President. We passed our budget tonight for 2024. I just want to encourage our city administrator and our department heads, don't lose traction now because 2025 is going to be just as bad as 2024, meaning that to balance 2025's budget, we're going to have to look at staffing levels again. So don't lose traction with the work that we've been doing so far. Continue moving forward with that, and throughout the year, bring suggestions and ideas forward that we can work on before November, December of next year. Thank you.
Mr. Vedder, Mr. Pakshavinsky?
I'd just like to wish everyone Merry Christmas.
Thank you. I too would like to wish the staff, employees, and all our department heads have a Merry Christmas, and for those traveling, safe travels. Mr. Helm?
Thank you. I too would like to touch on the mayor there with Gary. Gary was very boisterous in getting some stuff done and letting people know how he feels about this community, and he's worked hard with Barry in the chamber, and I'm happy to see and hear that the mayor now is talking, and hopefully some other people are talking, that we do have 220 North and the Business 2 corridor and stuff that's also part of East Grand Forks. So I'm happy to hear that we're going down that aisle a little bit now, so, and I thank Gary for that because he was a big part of that, so, thank you.
Ms. Peterson?
I don't have anything, thank you.
Mr. Larson?
I would just kind of reiterate, just want to thank everyone for all their efforts to work on the budget process. I know it wasn't easy, but it felt really good to pass this budget here tonight, and then wish everyone a Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Olsted?
Thank you, sir. I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, also want to thank the staff and department heads for working on the budget this year. I know it was a undertaking, and I appreciate all the hard work that went through. Hopefully, we can continue to move forward and continue to improve things. So, but again, I hope everybody has a Merry Christmas, and as Mr. Riapow, the Vice President says, safe travels to everyone. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Hutton?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. A couple of things tonight.